Enhancement session. Just to be clear to our board members, the goal of tonight is that we will be reviewing and discussing and hopefully getting ready to approve, we can have an informal vote, just on what we're calling the two pager. So the main goal is the first page, which you can see on our screen, and then the second page that includes just for years 2018 to 20, the what and the how and some of the metrics we're looking at for the strategic plan. So this is, our aspirational goals are also included on there. So we are just looking on the language of this two pager and also keeping in mind, this is really taking the strategic plan we have and just prioritizing the focus for the next two years and the communication around that. So I will, I think that's what we're looking for. I will let Mr. Smith talk us through some of this and what staff would like from us for tonight.
Okay, great. And I'm going to ask if we could pull up the two-page document and not the PowerPoint The PowerPoint presentation, we simply fixed some language that the board asked us to fix as part of the previous posting, but we're really going to speak to the two-page document tonight. So that's what we have posted here. And we want to thank you for your input and feedback from last Monday's work session. It's hard to believe that was just a week ago. We went back as a staff on that Tuesday at our leadership team meeting and really took a deep dive into the plan. And as I shared in Chairman's earlier, that I think it was the quickest turnaround on next steps that we've done in Fairfax County. We did a next step turnaround on all of those next steps in essentially a day and a half. And you'll note that we have placed some of those next steps into the plan here. And we've also given the board information as to if the next step wasn't included in the plan, that we would include it in later iterations of the plan, or at least start working on ways that we could formalize either information gathering or different processes. But I did just want to walk you quickly through the plan. And our ask tonight is that we can get approval so that we can use the strategic plan two pager in our professional development that we'll be using with our administrators, principals, and support staff this fall as we prepare for the upcoming school year. And the two-page document, we want to clarify some things around the metrics that we have in the two-page document. The things that you will not be approving tonight, you will not be looking at because we haven't posted updated benchmarking data and updated metrics and targets. We heard you loudly and clearly that we weren't really ready for prime time with those, and so we'll be bringing that information back in the fall and would then ask the board to approve the strategic plan in its totality when we know and get a better idea of what our benchmarks and targets will be. And so really, we're only looking at this two-page document. I want to direct your attention on the front page of the two-page document with a few changes that we made. We made a change around, and let's see, I don't know if I can use the little red dot this far away, but if you look under caring culture, we added a bullet about having a welcoming environment. We heard that from the board at our work session on Monday. We also wanted to direct your attention to the language under ethical and global citizen. It's the describer for the entire portrait of a graduate where we say that successful students will be able to apply portrait of a graduate attributes to their chosen path in life. And that helps those students have a better understanding of what portrait of a graduate means. It means different things to different students. And whatever your chosen path in life, success means that you'll be able to apply this work to whatever it is that you choose to do. So that's the front page, and that's the input that we received. If we go to the second page of the document, there were some questions about the metrics on this particular document, whether or not these were aspirational. And I want to clarify that everything on this document, we developed it as an aspirational goal. You'll note that we have, this is a strategic plan for school years 2018-2020, but that aspiration for these particular goals, as Dr. Braybrand said on Monday, is really a five-year look. And these are just the first two years of that look. And so that you can see that these are the things and items that will be focused on within these first two years. And then as we develop the benchmarks and metrics, that will give you a look out one year at a time of where we hoped to move the system. And again, all of that will be based on our three-year baseline data. So you'll note that at the top, on the upper left corner, we have added that these are aspirational goals. We feel that it's important for the community to understand that this is all aspirational work. We've, if you move down to under student success, you'll note that on the third bullet, we've changed that to say that all students will. There was a lot of information around graduation, graduating on time, passing college-level exams. We had that at least 90% before, and we've said that all students will. And then you'll also note that we have a link to our one Fairfax policy so that when we talk about students having access to a computer or tablet, that it's consistent with our one Fairfax policy of digital access for all residents. To the left of that, you'll note that we have added those student groups so that you get a sense of who we're talking about when we refer to student groups. And then we also heard loudly and clearly that we would want to have some kind of bullet or specific target, aspirational target for our students with disabilities. And so we stated that at least 90% of students with disabilities will improve reading performance each year. And then we would report out to the board on that particular measure and explain what metrics we're going to use. On the next page, you'll see for caring culture, not next page, but to the right, if we slide over and go to the top, you'll see that under caring culture, we've added at the end of the what, that we're going to, we're going to do all these things to ensure a welcoming environment for our students and for our staff. And then Mr. Moon, I believe you had a question about success under that first bullet, that staff referrals for disruptive behaviors will be similarly low across student groups. And then again, when you actually see the targets that we will be establishing, you'll see what that first year's target would be. And then going down to premier workforce, we did up the percentage for teaching positions filled by July 1, looking at a 10% increase, given that we had already reached that particular benchmark by the reporting out to you last Monday. And then you'll also note that there was some confusion around the internal transfer metric, so we did delete that internal transfer metric. And then lastly, under resource stewardship, under the second bullet, we stated that all schools will have appropriate classroom space rather than adequate classroom space. And then lastly, we added that at least 90% of students, staff, and parents will report that schools are safe. So this is the document that again, we want to use as we roll it out to our administrators at the leadership conference and then our individual regions want to use this document to set the tone for the upcoming school year, also knowing that we will be developing discreet targets, metrics, and targets for where we want to go within this upcoming school year. And again, directing your attention to the next steps, we did post all of the answers to your next steps. I believe there were 19 next steps, and we did post those, and that would be on board docs for your review. We have our champions here who are here for, to answer any questions that you might have about the work that we did, the changes that we implemented. Many of them were verbatim from the discussion that we had last Monday. And so we want to see if we can get your approval to use this document as we roll out next week's leadership conference and then roll out trainings with our principals. And then our principals could then use that as teachers come back in those first weeks of school.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and to all of our staff members who worked diligently and quickly to turn this around. We appreciate it. So far, I have just two board members. I have Elizabeth, followed by Karen Kies-Gamara, and I have a couple more. I'm Ian Corbett Sanders. Okay, thank you. Others, if you raise your hand, we'll get you down.
The first question I have is a clarification question because I felt like when we left the work session before, it was a question on what we were voting on. So are you asking us to vote on this on Thursday?
So it's a two pager. So we're not asking, and this, we call this the two pager. And so what we would like is to get direction from the board to allow the superintendent to use this with our staff to set the tone for the coming school year. So it's not necessarily voting on the strategic plan itself, but to vote on the use of this document, which is the aspirational document that we could use with our staff. And it's not necessarily a vote as much as it is that approval, informal approval to use it for professional development purposes.
Okay. Just a point of clarification on this one, the very question, Mrs. Schultze, very important question, Mrs. Schultze asked, because this is on the agenda to be voted on on this Thursday. Earlier conversation I had with our acting superintendent was that we're not going to be actually, if the board agrees, we're not going to be actually voting on this Thursday night. That's going to be postponed until sometime in the fall after they will have developed entire strategic plan with all those missing data that we were looking for. But tonight, if possible, just want to have a blessing from the board so the superintendent could use this two pager to start planning over summer and early part of September and the fall.
Okay. So I'm going to have a follow-up to your follow-up, which is, because one of the things that I had talked about behind the scenes leading up to this meeting was, could it just, could this just be presented to us per se at the board meeting on Thursday, kind of like a goal report is presented, without actually us taking a formal action of the board and that there be sort of a general consensus of you're headed in the right direction? Because I will tell you, if you want me to vote on this, I'm going to, I'm going to struggle. And I feel like I'm, you know, probably channeling, you know, Mr. McElveen, who struggled with some of the metrics. Like, for example, I will start with the fact that special ed has a new metric up here, and it's just reading. Like, well, why is the reading, why is the reading goal the right goal? I don't know. I haven't had that discussion. I persist in thinking that the, if we could slide down a little bit, because I want to point out on the left-hand side, the bottom of the, first of all, I get what you're trying to do, and we keep getting a little bit better. This is still very busy. But I, but I, but I agree, but I appreciate that there, you know, we keep having iterations, and I do think that each iteration is getting better. So I'll give you, I grant that. I still think that we need to have a conversation as a board around the all future FCPs students. We do not own the children from zero to five. I keep saying this. I keep hoping this goal becomes more actually strategic so that we meet the needs of the students who need that access instead of expanding our scope to where it doesn't belong. So there are a number of actual metrics here that kind of give me a pause, and I don't think we're there yet. So if it's under the guise of what I was hoping for, which is, look, you all are looking for direction. You need to, I mean, you need to get the, this thing underway. It may, you know, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. I get all of that under that guise. I'm great with a presentation on Thursday and us saying tacitly, we understand that there's a draft going forward, and we don't, there's not fundamentally things wrong with this, but we're going to be looking for, you know, some further, a lot more further refinement by staff and in conversation with the board and another presentation in the fall. If that's the guise, then I'm good. If it's, I have to put my hand up and vote for this, I'm going to struggle. I'm happy, I know I'm the first one speaking, others are going to contribute something. I don't want to get into the weeds here if we are in fact going to sort of kind of go, yes, go, and come back to us later.
To Ms. Schultz, just to clarify, you're comfortable with this being presented as a draft that staff can work with in preparing for next year without a formal vote, which I think is what we're talking about, and just understanding that we'll come back.
If they say, this is what we would like to operate under on the going-forward basis, and we're going to come back to you in the fall as the, as the data, as current data comes in, and we're going to further refine this, but this is, we need to be operational. The trains don't stop. I get that. But I cannot put my hand up, you know, in 48 hours or whatever, 72 hours for this.
And that is exactly what we're going to do. So we're going to come back in the fall and do exactly what you said. We're going to show you the refinements, we're going to show you the data, we're going to show you the targets. And so we're asking for that approval to use this for professional development purposes, and that could be here at this table. And we wouldn't have the need to have that discussion on Thursday. And then on Thursday, we bring you the entire package that has the updated metrics.
In the fall, you mean?
In the, in the fall. I didn't mean Thursday.
And that's, that's all correct, except I don't know where the bullet for have access to a computer or tablet. I don't know where that, I don't remember seeing that before. I don't remember that in my one-on-ones. I don't, I don't actually even remember that as part of next step, so I'm not, this seems to have materialized onto this document.
That's been part of the original plan, and we've only just brought that over from the previous version. And this was part of the plan, and we actually made some changes to this based on some of the input that we got from board members around the table on Monday.
Yeah. And I'd be even happier, I mean, if that stays in there by Thursday, I will probably be commenting on it, that that's not something that I've ever seen us vote for, that specific bullet.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Let's, Ms. Corbett Sanders and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, I want to thank both Mr. Moon and Ms. Strauss for teeing it up, because I did want to clarify that, given the earlier conversation, I don't think that this is going to come to the full board meeting on Thursday night, that today ideally, we will reach consensus around this table to allow for this with some modifications to go forward for professional development purposes. Having said that, I continue to have a bit of angst, and I am channeling Mr. McElveen with the term aspirational goals because it is a sub-bullet under what we are going to do in 2018 to 2020. And when I look at this, there are things on this list that tied to a time period cannot be achieved between now and 2020, including the language on the computer or tablet access because this board just last week agreed to having a fuller FCPs on plan presented to us and voted on in the fall. So it may be premature to have that language in there. I have a bit of a concern regarding the, actually significant concern regarding the language on students with disabilities, although I do think that the 90% for improved reading is important. We have heard significantly from many advocates in the community that they want a more inclusive goal in there and one that addresses the need for us to have a more inclusive approach to our special ed population and also to address concerns about graduation rates. And so I think that this is a good initial step, but I would like to see a little bit more on that. The, I like having the safety and security piece at the end. I would like to see a, rather than talking about the welcoming environment, given the conversations we've been having about the importance of climate and mental health, if we could look at it as a welcoming and supportive environment, or welcoming and inclusive environment, something like that, which is a little bit more, a little bit broader. And then finally, when we talk about our employees and the metrics on employees, the diversity of qualified teacher applicants will match the diversity of Virginia teaching graduates. I think we talked about this last week, and I may be channeling Mr. Moon here, but I believe what we talked about is the diversity of the community that we serve. So those are just a couple of comments. I do, most importantly, when we talk about aspirational goals and we do it as a subset to 2018-2020, I don't want to send an impression that we're going to achieve this by 2020. So the language needs to be clearer there.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Strauss and Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. So I'll try to start at macro and then maybe add a few little micro comments. Number one, I do really appreciate staff working extremely hard in the quick turnaround. I, for one, as a board member, didn't think that was something we should impose on staff. I frankly just didn't understand why we were shoving this thing in a week before the board's going to go on a one-month recess. So I just administratively felt like in a rock and a hard place. On the one, I didn't want to put this on all you guys. On the other hand, if someone's going to force me to vote on something, then we got to, you know, figure out how we can find, how we can work together and support you guys. So I'm thrilled at the macro level that this is a just green light, you know, you can proceed and we don't have major heartburn. And I do appreciate that some of the tweaks are there. But just some, you know, micro-level feedback, I do think this is extremely busy on the second page. I think there is far too much there. Strategic plan is also, how do you strategically communicate it? And this is, I mean, I have to put on my reading glasses to read it. I don't, I don't understand why we have packed so much in here. I may not be a communications graphic design expert, but this thing, as Ms. Schultz said, it is so busy. It has so much going on on the second page, including the little illusions in the background of the print and the bubbles that are in different spots. I mean, it, it is, it hurts my brain, honestly. And I know it's great to have something that's, again, creative-looking, but for your strategic plan, I think it just needs to be as straightforward. So the first page, well done. Second page on the back, I think ideally, you know, you can present it to staff, to your staff however you want, but feedback in terms of this coming out to the public with this school board members vote on it, no, this is way too much on this. And I think it's a reflection on the board that we bring out a strategic plan, which we were supposed to be the authors of. And so that brings me to my other little side note. I know this board has been so committed to teacher workload and student stress, and it really bothers me that we are, you know, that we wanted to refine and bring down this strategic plan that had 40 different desired outcomes, because that's obviously not very strategic. But what we have here under two desired outcomes for a caring culture, I really worry and, you know, I was trying to talk to some of my principals about this, how they feel about what we're communicating. I mean, everything we are hearing from our families and our employees is workload and stress levels, and this doesn't say anything about it at all, and it makes, I worry that we're tone deaf, or we will appear tone deaf. So I will talk with Superintendent Braybrand later over this summer. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we come back in the fall and make sure our employees know that while these might be sort of our focal points, no one's taking their eyes off of the prize, that quite frankly, if we don't address, you know, employee workload and student stress, then none of the rest of this stuff is going to help us achieve the ultimate portrait of a graduate and be the best system that we should be. So I'm glad I didn't have to come bother all of you with a last-minute amendment for Thursday, because it's really weighing on my mind a lot. But I do hope we can maybe reflect on that and think about how we can do it. But otherwise, again, I can certainly support today allowing Dr. Braybrand to go forward with staff for working on this over the August professional development work.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss, Ms. Kies-Gamara, and Ms. Evans.
First of all, thank you very much for the clarification that this is aspirational, and I am fine with that because we do have to go forward. And to give some direction, I was particularly pleased, again, as we've been talking about, the gaps in opportunity access and achievement for all students. Certainly, the parents of children with disabilities, I can understand the concern about perhaps, you know, where's math in that reading performance? But I think the highlights of what is there are fine. I do think we have to continue to address the digital divide. Go Virginia, business community, everybody else are, we are doing a disservice, particularly to our older students, if we don't address the digital divide. Not necessarily that every student down to kindergarten needs a computer, but, and I don't think that what is, that what is suggested here is suggesting that, but it is, it is access. So I do support that. I'm also pleased, again, to see the language regarding clinical, cultural responsiveness. I agree, you know, welcoming environment is very important. And I'm also pleased to see the language on disruptive behavior referrals because that is, that continues to be a concern, to make sure that we're addressing that appropriately and not over creating situations that are not appropriate for students. So as an aspirational document, I am fine with it. Even though the second page has a lot on it, I know that again, when we are at the school level and working with our employees, there has to be more information given. The first page is certainly much easier to, for the community, but our, part of our challenge is we are communicating both to the broader community and then also to our employees and our school-level employees. So I am fine with it. Thank you.
Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I agree with a lot of my colleagues. I am, especially with Ms. Schultz, with respect to not really being ready to vote, especially on this second page. When I dug down a little deeper, especially with some of the hyperlinks, it became a bit more confusing for me. One thing I would like to highlight, and I think I mentioned this last week when we had a work session on the same matter, with respect to cultural responsiveness at the top under students, families, and employees, our success is defined as staff referrals for disruptive behavior will be, are one of the points, is staff referrals for disruptive behavior will be similarly low across student groups. And that, I assume, goes to, that's confusing for me because I don't think the cultural responsiveness is the only contributor to the problem of this imbalance in the report of disruptive behaviors. Okay? And I think in a nutshell, that's my problem with that. I think that, you know, there's greater training with respect to how we deal with students with special needs. There's students, there's ESAL students, there's socioeconomic situations that we're dealing with there that, you know, somehow come out in how we respond to discipline. So I'm all for cultural responsiveness, but I think that as an indicator is confusing to me because that's not the only thing that's contributing to that problem. So I just kind of leave that as something to, to think about. I found it instructive to look down at your hyperlink under Fairfax County Equitable School Readiness Strategic Plan. And under Strategy Four, you had a, I thought, a really good, more inclusive paragraph that talks, talked about providing to our kids regardless of economic, cultural, of economic, cultural, or ethnic background, I would have wanted to say special education needs with that. I think that is more, that more addresses that particular bullet. So it may be a matter of we're mixing things there, because cultural responsiveness is important. However, when you list disruptive behavior, I'm not sure that cultural responsiveness is the only thing that we need to be concerned about. So I, you know, since we're, I will say, we're going in the right direction, I want to have further discussion about some of the metrics, particularly in those hyperlinks. But I just wanted to bring that out, that that particular thing there was confusing for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everybody's work on this, and I do think we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction, and it gets better every time, so thank you for, particularly for the quick turnaround. That was impressive. I particularly like the change language and the different language, whether we end up sticking with it or not, but the welcoming environment, whether we add to it, but I think that that's an improvement over what was there before. And the additional metrics going up to 85% of vacancies will be filled by July 1. We were at, I think we said 79% this year, and I appreciated also the added information that we are at, what, 97% or we're at 97, beyond 97% of, of all of our positions filled. So that was an important piece of information, too, and put it into some context. So those are all good things. I do think, moving forward, I have one, one technical question. I'm sorry, we're kind of repeating this, but I do see that this is listed as an action item for Thursday, so that is going to change to what? Madam Chair and Acting Superintendent?
The intention is that if we get the go-ahead tonight, if we give the go-ahead tonight to our acting superintendent, then we will actually pull the item off of Thursday's agenda and allow the superintendent to continue work on this and come back with the full plan in September or October. But in parallel to that, they will use this two-pager in their professional development over the next three weeks with our senior staff.
So going back to Mrs. Schultz's original, if I heard you properly, we were, I think we've all agreed, we don't want to put our hands in the air for a specific, so, but the idea of presenting this, you don't want to present it either, just?
I don't believe it's ready to be presented, because it's part of, and I will let the acting superintendent speak, but
Okay.
Earlier conversations were that we would not have it on the agenda Thursday night.
Just remove it completely?
Correct.
Do you think it would be a miscommunication if we presented something that's not ready? Is that the?
Yeah, I would rather than present something in the fall, when we have
And just when we're done.
So there will certainly be questions from the board about particular metrics and targets, and I would rather have all that finalized when we do the presentation.
Rather than being confusing to the public?
Exactly.
Okay, that makes, that makes perfect sense. So just moving forward, a couple of the things I would raise, I think we're not, we haven't quite figured out if this is really aspirational, this page two, if it's aspirational or if it's the goals. You know, I'm looking at, under student success, we want all of our students to graduate. Well, yes, we do, but that's clearly aspirational, and that will always be aspirational. In other places, we say we want 90% to do this and that and the other thing, which may be a more realistic, you know, that may be an actual metric for us. So I think when, when we're looking at this for September, I think we have to decide if this is completely aspirational, then, then all of those 90% are probably going to go to all, you know, if you see what I'm saying. We either have all in one place or we have 90% there. You know, we just have to think about, what is this document? Is it actually a metric or is it actually aspirational? So, you know, just something to think about there. So I do think, I agree with my colleagues who say it would be nice if this could be, you know, since this is the more general document, that when we see it again in September, if, you know, I don't want to take the meat out of it. You know, we do need to have some, some meat on this page, but perhaps simplifying it would be, would be a good thing. So with that, I will say I can certainly support giving the superintendent the go-ahead with the general themes that this outlines and saying we're moving in the right direction, even if we haven't quite gotten to, to the details.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And I think I will just wrap up comments on this by saying I agree, you channeled exactly where I was headed. I do think, I wonder if we can get to the point where we can separate the specific metrics, but be able to kind of explain what the goals are, what we're getting at, what we're trying to measure, rather than being so much in the weeds. So I agree, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. And I agree with my colleagues, my, especially with the diversity of Fairfax County for our staff, I do think that's critical, that we discussed last time, not all of Virginia. And then I just have a quick question. Since you're bringing this back, you know, starting to use it, I assume, at the leadership conference and in other areas, will there be an opportunity through some of that work to receive some more input from staff, from leaders, from teachers on where this is and what their thoughts are? I guess that's.
Yeah, we would certainly be able to take input from our staff on the, on the plan as we start to roll it out. You never know what you're going to get into until you can do a full rollout and get feedback. So we would certainly take all that into consideration as we brought something back to the board in September.
Yeah, and perhaps if you're able to have some working groups or things, that would be wonderful. So thank you so much, really appreciate it. We are about an hour ahead of schedule, so I spoke
We'll have to get a sense of the board.
Oh, we'll get a sense of the board, but just want to let people know if, sorry, we do have to get a sense of, but I do want to let people know, because I know many were hoping to join the, or be present for the SRO discussion at 7:30. So as long as we're sticking to the schedule ahead of time, I think Ms. Corbett Sanders agreed that we can flip the last two work sessions.
We're going to go with the strategic, or the budget first?
The budget first.
And then we will discuss the SRO.